All right, good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting to order on February 13th, 2018. Welcome, welcome. And to get started, Timmy, would you mind calling the roll?
Commissioner Abraham.
Present.
Commissioner Holland.
Here.
Commissioner Rose.
Here.
Commissioner Wilson.
Present.
Mayor Harless.
Here and present. Commissioner Holland, would you be willing to lead us in invocation?
Yes. Dear Lord, thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our city. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Give us a spirit of service. Help us see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us and to treat all persons with the reverence they deserve. We seek a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and rightness, confidence in what is good and fitting, and the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. Amen.
Amen. If you'll stay standing and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. City manager, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight?
No changes.
Thank you. All right, before we jump into business, we have several presentations from our community tonight. First up is a few of the delegates that joined us in San Cristobal, Mexico, excuse me, San Cristobal de las Casas, Mexico, a couple weeks ago. And we were invited to participate in the Sabores y Saberres Festival, which means taste and something.
Knowledge.
Knowledge, thank you, Nathan, which I obviously didn't gain while I was there. We had an incredible experience, and I have lots of stories I can tell you over time that I think really did, to me, give a big indication of what our experience being a UNESCO creative city is really all about. This, in fact, was the first experience I had, and I think maybe one of our first experiences as a city, where we didn't just take administrators or community leaders, we actually took people with those creative skill sets that we always talk about, and they got to experience other people that have those skill sets in our community. So I'm very excited tonight. We have Laura Oswald from the CVB and several of our participants that we'll name whenever they come up to share with us their experience. And I think there's a slideshow. So Laura, do you want to come on up and get us started? And then I will call up the rest of our delegation in just one moment. You also have in front of you the 2018 UNESCO annual report that the CVB puts together
Thank you, Mayor Harless. The slideshow has begun, and you will see many images that really exemplify what this experience was in San Cristobal, Mexico. It's really been difficult to sum up in words what this experience and opportunity for Paducah was and can continue to be for Paducah as a creative city, but I think these pictures do a bit of a good job in helping to illustrate that for us. As Mayor Harless said, the festival was bringing together flavor and artisanal knowledge. So this was the first festival of its kind to really contemplate how do we, as a city of crafts and folk art, of visual art, find a creative kind of informing through flavor as well? So cities of gastronomy and craft and folk art came together to really contemplate that connection. And you'll see that we had an incredible delegation to represent Paducah during this event. You know, the CVB has kind of led the creative city effort here in Paducah as a means to share Paducah with the world and invite people, invite travelers in and to understand the creative culture that we do have here in Paducah. And at this event, we did just that. Some of the delegates actually described Paducah's installation and exhibition as a sort of hug that embraced the festival. And I think that you can see in these pictures that our delegates represented Paducah and Kentucky culture so well through cuisine, craft, and music. And at the same time, Mayor Harless and myself and others participated in some really important global conversations about how we can leverage creativity for a sustainable future for all of our cities. So as Mayor Harless said, the UNESCO annual report for this year has just been published, and you all have a copy of this. There are so many creative projects in our community that really exemplify what it means to be a creative city. We are truly a creative city in action. And I also shared a little card that we produced in Spanish and English that highlighted the gastronomic tasting that Chef Sarah Bradley led at the festival that was really complemented by fiber art, thanks to Hancock's and the Paducah School of Art and Design for helping us to present that. And then, of course, to our musicians, which a couple of them are here tonight. So without further ado, I'll let some of our delegates speak.
Great. Do you all want to come up? Absolutely. We have with us some of the solid rocket boosters who've joined us, Todd Anderson, and yeah, come on up, guys, and Nathan Brown. Nicole Brown also joined us, and Landy Bryant joined us as well. And so we're just going to ask them to share either their takeaway or an experience or a story from their experience. So Todd, Landy, want to go first?
I'll go first.
Great.
First of all, I just, I think one of the things that resonated with everybody, we keep saying, is how humbled we were to have this opportunity and to have this community welcome us with such open arms and give us accommodations and food so that all we had to do was get there, which was really amazing. But I did write a statement that I'm going to read because I usually like to speak off the cuff, but this was kind of an emotional experience, so I'm going to read it. Going into this with a very limited perspective of what it would truly mean, I have returned to my beloved hometown with a new perspective, a new way of looking at Paducah and its broader reach, a new way, a pride that I've always felt but that has been amplified, a desire to share with everyone I see the impact interactions can have as we are easily retired to our own individual life-work bubbles and rarely take the time to observe the world and our place in it through the eyes of others. Each moment was to be absorbed to the fullest as we all knew how lucky we were to be able to participate in such a special inaugural event. I am forever changed and look forward to the collaborations that will be born and global impact this will have for all residents of Paducah and the region. So that just kind of sums it up. But also be looking for an article that I wrote in Paducah Life next month about this that has quotes from all the beautiful people that attended because I think we all took individual things from it, but as a unit in Paducah, which we all serve so many different capacities here, we grew stronger as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, and I got this topic.
I was just admiring it.
Beautiful.
Must have felt my eyes on it.
I got my topic, Kohl's Sail Rack, I guarantee it. I'd like to tell a story and I'd like to make a point that has resonated with me as I've thought about the trip. The day I saw the picture come through there that Chef Sarah was serving her five-course Kentucky meal with smoked pork for 10 hours in a kiln or in a smoker that they had made for us, we were playing music all through the meal, about a three-hour meal, and by the end, everybody's starting to get a little bit tired, a little bit ready to go. And we had planned the last two songs. You know, you generally want to plan how you end something, so we always have a game plan for the final two songs. So as it's all coming to an end and everybody's standing up and talking and doing all of that, we go into a song that Josh Coffey, our friend and fiddle player, figured out, learned was the kind of the anthem of the region, the state song of that area. It was called Los Chupanecos, and he taught it to us. It's oddly similar to bluegrass. There are very few differences, honestly, in it and bluegrass. So we went into that, and that just kind of blew them away. We'd been playing bluegrass, a little bit of rockabilly and swing the whole time, and then we go into their state song, and they are surprisingly proud of it and very, were very moved, I think, by the fact that we had learned it and we were doing it. The room comes to a standstill. Everybody turns towards, well, not the stage, we were just playing on the ground, towards us and just starts rocking, and they're just into it. And we go through, it's not a very long song, we finish it, and then we immediately launch into My Old Kentucky Home, that's our state song, one that I have become increasingly proud of as I've become an adult. And all of our Paducah delegation was up here hanging out, swaying, singing at the top of their lungs. I guarantee you, most of them have never sang that song in their lives, but somehow they mumbled through the words. And half the room is crying. This is all adults. These are business people that have traveled from Encinita, California, they've traveled from Colombia, from South Korea, from Paducah, Kentucky, you know, from a lot of different places, actually getting in with each other for real. So that's my emotional story. The other side of that, as I've thought about it, I think with any healthy relationship, you have to make deposits as well as withdrawals, just like a bank account. You can't take out unless you've put in. I think UNESCO is a unique way to tap into special areas in tourist money. Our deposit is with UNESCO, and we're making withdrawals from them, too. I think the bigger withdrawals come with the tourist dollars of people knowing about Paducah, us being represented well, and them talking about us and ultimately coming here. Thanks.
Thank you so much. That's beautiful.
My name's Nicole Brown. I went as Nathan's wife.
Because you are.
I did tell that I had many other talents because one of my favorite talents is meeting people from everywhere. And I guess my story that filled my heart the most was how Nathan, as a potter, communicated and bonded with the South Korean master potters with not really knowing their language and really bonded. You'll see in some pictures that they even bought a cowboy hat with Nathan because they really wanted to connect with them. That made me very happy. And then, obviously, just connecting with everybody that we met there, and it was a lot of work for everybody. I was witnessing the hard work that all my friends went to show and represent our culture, and they did a fabulous job. In the midst of being exhausted, they still tried to turn around a good attitude with making sure everything got done. And I think we also were charged together as a group to represent that we do have a proud town to represent, and we're very, we bonded closer together over feeling proud of our town. And, you know, in a way, we're starting to become elders. I try to remember that. We're becoming elders ourselves, and so it really charged us for the next, you know, 40 years ahead of us. I think it was a beautiful thing, and thank you to Nathan for inviting me to this gig. I just love that.
Thank you. Go.
All right, I'll go last. I'm Nathan Brown. I'm a musician and a community lover and a...
Renaissance hillbilly.
A Renaissance hillbilly, as one of my friends. As more of a slue person, not really, I don't live in a hill. But just to sum everything up, I think that everyone that went, those who were lucky enough to go as, to get their airfare covered by the CVB, those like my wife, who we all, we all, of course, individually paid for our spouses, our significant others, to go with us, everybody that went was a large group of people from our city that has spent a lot of their lives dedicating their own time and money for free to make the city better. I noticed that contingency was strong in the group that went. We are, we feel very lucky to be a part of it. We are all people who have never really asked for a lot in return for trying to make our city better through organizing things like nonprofit organizations, arts organizations, film festivals, music festivals, all the things that everyone does. And there's so many people in Paducah that give themselves to the city so often. And I really see the UNESCO trip as, like Todd said, an investment. I think that we spend a lot of our time and energy and capital investments on things like that drive economic development in the city. And I think it's very, very important to drive things like commerce and economic development. But I think with this small investment, we're driving an investment in humanity which will eventually pay off just as much as going after that next big warehouse to open up here and create jobs. I think the creative field has proven over and over that it has created an economy in Paducah, and I'm very proud to be a part of it. I hope I can continue to be a part of it. So thanks for the opportunity. We all appreciate it. I think I could speak for all of us. We thank you so much. Thanks.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions that they want to ask our delegation?
I was just going to say, I understand from Sarah Bradley last night that one night when you all started playing, a couple from Katie's Kentucky came up.
Oh, my gosh.
That was also visiting in the area, heard the music that they, you know, recognized easily, and I guess they knew all your family, Landy, and all of that. So, I mean, you just never know who you're going to see or what's going to happen.
Love it.
Thank you all very much. It was great.
I just wanted to say, I was listening to a podcast today, and they were talking about how we share 99.99% of our genetic code. We're all the same. We're 99.99% similar in our genetic code. And I think the beautiful paradox of the UNESCO organization and experience for our city is that it shows the power of what we have in common, but also the power of our differences and like sort of that beautiful cultural diversity wrapped up in the fact that we are all so much the same. And I just thank you for going and representing us and showing that and coming back and illustrating that, that beautiful paradox for all of us.
Question?
Yeah, I'd like to echo what you said about the creative arts that we have here. And there's so many people that volunteer their time in putting on different festivals. And I look at that as, Paducah, we have a, the economic development part of it is a tool that we use, it's a very important tool, but also a tool that we have, more importantly, is our people. And when you look at what's, what happened here with UNESCO having their meeting here, there's a reason for that, and that started a long time ago with some individuals, with some vision. So I love our city because we have so many different tools in our box to use, and we represent ourselves well. And I'm sure you guys did exactly that in Mexico.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Thank you all for being here tonight and sharing with us.
Thanks for having me.
One thing that we are, I'm pretty certain that Laura and Mary are following up with and we've been working on, is some kind of just snapshot report of the, how we did financially support this trip, primarily because it's really important to me that we honor the personal expense that the people you just heard from put into this trip. And so it's important, I think, for our citizens to understand how these things are supported, not just because, not just because you're taxpayers, but also because we want other people to understand how to participate in these programs as well. So trying to be full transparent about how to get involved with the Creative Cities Network, and maybe someday someone else can go on one of these trips, but we have to start with a basic understanding of how it works in the first place. So that's part of our goal moving forward, and you'll be hearing from us on that. All right, moving ahead, we have Mr. Mark Bryant, and I'm pretty sure, is Emily with you? I guess you have a whole team. I'll let you introduce all your team when you get up here, if you don't mind.
Mayor, if I might.
Sorry, we graduated high school together, and I don't think I've seen you since that day.
I don't think I have to do much introducing. Let me pass this out. I'm going to do what you told me, two to five.
All right, how are you?
Those two.
Which side are you going to land on, the two or the five?
Somewhere in between.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
Mayor, this is, and Commissioners, thank you very much for allowing us to come here tonight. Those of you that don't know, but these are my law partners. This is Emily Rourke, and Emily and I have been together since she got out of law school at the University of Kentucky in 2000, and a fantastic lawyer that works with me on a very, on a lot of very complicated cases. This is David Bryant, a fifth-generation Padukan who has been with me since April the 14th, 1981. And he is also an excellent lawyer, and I'm very proud of him. We have become really involved in opioid litigation around the country. Over the years, I have become, I used to be Collins Attorney in Paducah, and I have...
You have a ladybug on your collar.
Oh, thank you. Can you see?
I can't listen to anything.
Thanks a lot.
It looks like it's about, I don't think they bite, but it was making me really nervous. They're just pleasant.
Because of that position, over the years, I have become very good friends with a number of former attorney generals around the country. And one of them is a guy named Mike Moore, who was the Attorney General of Mississippi for years, and he was in charge of the tobacco litigation, and the one that settled that major case against all the tobacco companies years ago. And another one is a guy named Grant Woods, who was the, Grant was the Attorney General of Arizona and was also the Chief of Staff to John McCain for many years. And we have worked together on a lot of very complicated cases, and so they talked to me about this case and told me that I needed to get involved on the city level in these cases, cities and counties. And so I have done that. And we now, we have partnered with a law firm out of Birmingham, Alabama, a big firm, and a guy named Jeffrey Friedman, who is the main, named partner down there. And he and I, actually, with Emily and David, we've got a train derailment case we're getting ready to try against CSX in Knoxville, Tennessee, in about 10 days. Where 7,000 people were evacuated. So we've really gotten into some really serious litigation, and this is very serious litigation. And when you look at historically, what we've managed to do, we have communities all the way from Key West, Florida, we represent Key West, Florida, and a number of other communities in Florida. We've gone up into Mississippi, Alabama, Tennessee, and it's only recently that we started on Kentucky. And so I wanted to get my hometown, if at all possible, because I think it's really important that we get involved in the litigation. When I've talked to a few other communities, the first question they have is, well, you know, I thought that the state would take care of us. But the real problem is, for example, one of the biggest problems in this whole case is with Purdue Pharmaceutical, Purdue Pharma, they've already settled with Kentucky, and they anticipate Purdue Pharma is going to have to pay billions out to the other, to the other states, but because they've already settled with Kentucky, they're not going to have to pay any money to Kentucky. Well, where it ends up with you is, they've not settled with you. And there are a number of damages that you can recover, mostly things that will help law enforcement and mental health, because we are all spending so much money in law enforcement with helping people that get on opioids. And of course, I don't know if you all even noticed it the other day, there's a story about some guy that broke into a pharmacy here in Paducah, and the police caught him as he was coming out of there, and you knew what he was in there for, was to steal opioids. And so what happens is people getting hooked on these things, and it's happening all over the country. Even in Paducah, in the last five years, in Paducah and McCracken County, we've had the highest number of deaths because of opioids of any place in western Kentucky. We've had 88 deaths in Paducah and McCracken County in the last five years. And so I gave you this handout, and if you'll look at the impact on Paducah, on police overtime, fire and emergency services, dispatch, public safety, criminal justice system, and these are all things that we can recover on. Our group not only has excellent lawyers, but we also have CPAs that we have hired that are going to be working with the communities to find out the amount of money that you've had to pay. For example, if you look at eastern Kentucky and you see over in Pikeville, that community over there, it's one of the worst in America. And so even though it's not nearly as big as Paducah, they'll be able to figure out what kind of expenses they've had in law enforcement, EMS, and so forth, and they'll be able to recover, and probably because they've had so many more people die over there, they'll get more money than the city of Paducah will. But nonetheless, it's kind of, if we don't get involved in it, we can't recover from it. We cannot rely on Frankfurt to let the money trickle down to us. And what I have to offer to you is, if you've got any issues with me, you want to talk about this case, all I got to do is walk across the street, and I can talk to you, and I'll be glad to do that, and you can count on me to do it. We have experienced people that will do this, and here's the other part of it, is we front every single expense. We do this on a contingency fee, and I can tell you, our contingency fee is one-third of whatever we recover, but from years of experience before federal judges, we never get that much. The federal judge sets what is the amount that we are to recover. So whatever the number is that we put in there, and that's what we do, is we put in one-third, but we also know that we're not going to get one-third. So I can tell you also, this litigation would be filed in front of Judge Russell here in Paducah, be filed in Paducah in U.S. District Court, but he would immediately transfer it to Cleveland, Ohio, and we will then be in the multi-district litigation in Cleveland. I know from what Mike Moore and Grant Woods have told me, as well as Joe Rice, who's a lawyer with Motley Rice out of South Carolina, and that's, they're like the big three in this litigation, they've told me that the federal judge has already told them, along with the defense counsel, for many of the transporters and the pharmaceutical companies, this case is going to settle. And so I believe that it will. I also believe it's not going to take a long time. In fact, anybody, we don't have a Volkswagen dealer here, but if we did, you'd know that it was not very long after they filed a lawsuit against Volkswagen, where Volkswagen threw up their hands and settled the case. The same thing's going on now with this. But if you don't participate in it, you can't recover. So anyhow, I don't, if anybody's got any questions, we're available to do it, and I'd like to do it. I'd be very, very humbled and proud to be the lawyer for my community.
Great. Well, thank you for being here. I do have one question. In the letter, I maybe I misread it, I think the letter was talking about the county and CAECO maybe being involved in some of this conversation, but you're saying that you would think that the city and the county might be two different participants in this, right?
Yes, in fact, we have, I have a meeting with the fiscal court on the 26th. I'm going to be in trial in Knoxville, Tennessee, but Emily and/or Emily and David will be there for that, for that meeting. And hopefully, we'll represent the county, too. We represent, actually, Ballard County. The county attorney has told me they're going to sign the contract with us for the next meeting, and we've got a few over in eastern Kentucky. And anyhow, I'm very community-oriented, and I know this is important to the community. I've studied it, and I would, I'd be very proud for us to be your lawyers, and we'll do a good job.
Great. I'm going to ask the Commissioner if they have any questions. Commissioner Abraham, you have any questions or comments?
You explained it pretty well. My, I guess the question I would have, I don't know if it's a question or not, the average person on the street, they hear, they hear the word opioids, they hear that a lot, and not fully understanding exactly what that is and what that means. We can look at the stats here that you graciously afforded us, but just real quick, what exactly, what is that? How does that, how does a person get from A to B? And just as quick as you can.
Explaining what opioids...
Yeah, and how, how a person goes from, okay, I'm just, I'm in a little pain, I got some pain pills, the next thing I know, I'm on the corner trying to get what I can't get from my, so talk a little bit about that.
Okay, and I think that what we're talking about may be two different things here, but basically, probably the most widespread opioid is loratab. And there are two different issues, and one is the overuse of prescribing opioids, and that's probably mainly what we're talking about here. But then what happens is they're over-prescribed, people become addicted to them, and then they get to where you're talking about buying them in the corner. And so I think that's, there's kind of two issues. One is the... One is the over-prescription of them by doctors, and then two is, once they're over-prescribed, and they're buying them on the corners. And so, you know, I saw Chief Barnhill here, and I think that he could probably tell you that our criminal justice system is getting overrun with crimes that are being committed by individuals who are either directly or indirectly related to opioid use. You know, it used to be methamphetamine or illegal substances, and now it's more and more prescription drugs, specifically opioids. It's not just lor tabs. If you look at, let's see, the...
Well, and correct me if I'm wrong, Emily, the issue with the pharmaceutical companies is that there was deliberate misdosage information given out. They were telling people that OxyContin and drugs like that lasted for 12 hours, they knew the whole time they did not last for 12 hours, and that leads to addiction in opiates if you're misdosed, if you, if it runs out and you can't sustain and taper off. That's where you get the addictive properties.
I think there's a lot of truth to that, yes. And I think they were also told that they're, these weren't addictive, that, you know, they could, like originally, oxycodone was just for cancer, and then they're using it for more and more things, and fentanyl and so forth. So all those are opioids that were originally used for very, very serious illnesses, and now are being prescribed for back pain, neck pain, just anything that you go in for. And so what's happening is that they're just being prescribed, for lack of a better word, like candy, and unfortunately, people are becoming addicted to them by the dozens. And then, when they can't get them, or when a doctor cuts them off, you can't be cut off from those immediately. And what do they do? They go out to the street corner. So then they have them, so then there's the direct effect of the crime of being charged with possession of an illegal substance, because you don't have a prescription for them, and the indirect effect of maybe the theft of them, or theft because you're on them and have too many of them, and so you create, you commit an offense because you're under the influence of them, or the domestic violence, or the DUI that is committed, and it's just, it's just a snowball effect that's happening more and more and more in our communities, in this community. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it seems like there needs to, I'm trying to figure out where's that, from the medical community, where's that plumb line with a patient, you know? Because that's where it starts, you know, giving the pills, the opioids, and so that, that seems to me, that's, that's gonna be a challenging point there, to figure out where that, where that balance is.
I believe they're still trying to correct that. I mean, they've gotten to the point where they were prescribing these for things that should have never been prescribed. Now, they're kind of reversing course and perhaps, you know, neglecting to prescribe some of these opioids where perhaps a patient should have gotten them. But regardless, the problem, and where that all came from, was that the manufacturers and distributors convinced the doctors through just elaborate schemes that these drugs were safe, they were non-addictive, that you could give them to someone for years and years and years, and they wouldn't become addicted, which was all false. And so that's, that's what these cases are about.
Which is, let me add one thing, and then Commissioner Holland, which I think is the reason why we need to have this conversation in a much more broad way than just the three of you coming and talking about one component of the whole issue. The one good news about Paducah right now, in this moment, is that we have an opportunity to be preventative of this problem. We are not northern Kentucky, we are not eastern Kentucky, we are sitting in a much better position. They've all told me that, people who work on this issue in northern, in eastern Kentucky. So perhaps one thing that we could consider as a commission, and maybe if Mark can help us, is to consider what more information do we need from other experts in the field, the medical experts, the mental health experts. Dr. Withrow is becoming well-known for his knowledge of this issue as well. So maybe we need to explore that as a commission to start that conversation a little bit more robustly. This is just one tiny moment and component of what's available in the issue.
Mayor, if I may, I'm the Vice Chairman of the Board of the University of Kentucky. We have one of the top opioid experts in the world at UK, is a medical school professor, and if you decide that that's what you want to do, I will get him down here to speak to you, because he is fabulous.
Great, that sounds like a good idea. Yep, I have a lot of nods, Mark, so just write that one down. Thank you for that, Mark.
Thank you for your time.
We have a few more questions, if you don't mind. How much was the Kentucky settlement with Purdue?
Oh, not enough, 24 million.
Oh, 24 million.
Oh, yeah, it was terrible at the time, everybody thought, well, that's good. But now, we're really hurt because we've already settled them, and so we're gonna have to go against McKesson, and some of the distributors, and AmerisourceBergen, but Purdue is the big one. I mean, that's where the huge...
Is there a deadline to join?
No, but here's the deal, I do know from, from having talked to my friends that are up there, and there is not a deadline, but I think that there is some reason to do this post-haste, because I think it's important to start working on what our damages are, because really, we're not gonna go to trial. I mean, there, in my opinion, there's not gonna be a trial in this case. I think they're gonna come up with a pocket of money, conceivably more than the $218 billion that Big Tobacco settled for. It's gonna be paid out over a number of years, so that they don't bankrupt these companies. It'll, they'll remain major companies in America, but they're gonna have to pay this money off. And so the real reason to do it is to just get behind it so that we can get our accountants and start working with it, chief police, and the other areas, in order to find out what our damages are, because once you get all that stuff up there, you're just in line to get paid. And so the sooner you get it done, the quicker you're gonna get your money back. The other day, I noticed, I think it was McCracken Sheriff's Office, or it could've been the City of Paducah Police Department, somebody around here spent $30,000 on Narcan. Well, that's money that you're gonna get back from up there, but you can't do it until you make a claim for it.
And another point that, to what you said, Mayor, is that, you know, this is, they talk about this being a gateway drug to heroin. I'm not saying heroin is not here yet, but we don't have it like they have in central Kentucky, or northern Kentucky, and it's, I mean, they say that people are overdosing in courthouses on heroin. So we wanna stop that before it gets here, and that's terrifying.
Thank you for that.
That could come this way.
Commissioner Rhodes, you have any questions or thoughts, Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, sir.
No?
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you for your presentation, we appreciate you. All right, moving forward with our consent agenda, items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Board of Commissioners, and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member so requests, in which event, we will remove these. Anyone have anything to remove tonight? No? All right. City Clerk, would you read the items recommended for approval, please?
Okay, item one, amendments for the January 23, 2018 City Commission Meeting, and a reappointment of Shirley Thompson to the Human Rights Commission. This term shall expire July 24, 2020. Receiving filed documents, personnel actions, and the following municipal orders. A municipal order amending the fiscal year 2017-2018 position and pay schedule for the full-time employees of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, to reflect the correct current number of vacant and filled positions. A municipal order accepting the bid of Alden and Roberta Haldil, in the amount of $150 plus recording and deed preparation fees for real property located at 1551 South Fifth Street. A municipal order accepting the bid of WK Rentals, in the amount of $2,500 plus recording and deed preparation fees for real property located at 923 North 26th Street. A municipal order accepting the bid of Tess McKinney, in the amount of $1 plus recording and deed preparation fees for real property located at 1234 North 12th Street. A municipal order of the City of Paducah approving the donation of land generally located at 3330 Wayne Sullivan Drive, Paducah, Kentucky, from Chief Paducah Development Corporation for the purpose of stormwater management. A municipal order accepting grant funds through Kentucky Division of Waste Management for the 2018 Engineering Public Works Department Litter Abatement Program. A municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute an application and all documents necessary for a reimbursement grant for fiscal year 2019, in the amount of $30,888 through the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet's Highway Safety Program for funding to be used for overtime hours associated with specific traffic enforcement for the Paducah Police Department. A municipal order of the city approving a second amendment to Mark Thompson's employment contract and authorizing the execution of the amendment. And last, a municipal order approving an employment agreement between the City of Paducah and Kelly Drew for employment as an operations officer for the Paducah Police Department.
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Holland?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
And we have Rick Murphy up to say one thing about what we just approved.
Mayor, Commission, I did wanna draw attention to that land donation made by Chief Paducah Realty, I mean, with the things we got going on with stormwater and stuff, and those things. It's 3.11 acres on the south side of town, it's a low area that has, doesn't lend itself to building very well, but it lends itself very well for helping us store stormwater. I approached the owners with that, and they're more than willingly and generously donating this property to the City of Paducah for a better use of storing stormwater, so I did wanna say thank you to those gentlemen of Chief Paducah Realty.
Absolutely, thank you.
Well, thank you.
Very much. All right, moving forward, Commissioner Wilson?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending ordinance number 2017-06-8487, entitled, an ordinance adopting the City of Paducah, Kentucky annual budget for the fiscal year July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018, by estimating revenues and resources, and appropriating funds for the operation of city government. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2017, and ending June 30, 2018, ordinance number 2017-06-8487, be amended by the following reappraisal. Transfer $28,000 from the General Fund 1,000, Fund Reserves, to the Human Resources Contract Services Account 1,035,11523070.
Great, thank you. Any discussion? City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Holland?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Well, I guess we're gonna get the money, we might as well know where to spend it, right? I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, accepting the proposal of Strategic Government Resources, SGR, to assist the city with recruiting services for selection of city manager, and authorize the mayor to execute all documents related to same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah accepts the proposal of Strategic Government Resources, SGR, in the amount not to exceed $28,000 for the assistance in recruiting and selecting a city manager, and authorize the mayor to execute a contract for same.
Second. Any discussion? City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Holland?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
And Commissioner Holland?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance approving change order number one with Bacon Farmer Workman Engineering and Testing, Inc., for the Riverfront Redevelopment Project Phase 1B, and authoring, authorizing the mayor to execute the change order. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah hereby authorizes the mayor to execute change order number one with Bacon Farmer Workman Engineering and Testing, Inc., BFW, for a price increase in the amount of $220,000 for additional design services for the City of Paducah's Riverfront Redevelopment Project Phase 1B. This change order increases the total contract amount to $346,000, $380.
Second.
Mayor, Commission, I have Mark Workman here with us from BFW. One thing I'd like to do is, I'd like to celebrate, this portion of the project is done, the floating portion is done, and it was that portion of the project that really created this change order, as far as the complications in the river, and some of the things that were not anticipated, but the project is done, and it's actually producing revenue for us. I believe, Mark, we had $12,000 in one month that brought in. And also, we are being recognized across the country, across the boating country as well, in magazines that are being brought out, we talked about tourism, your travels this evening, so we're being recognized in many different ways, and I'd like to focus on the positive of the project, in saying we're well on our way to having a lot of guests coming to Paducah, so.
That's awesome.
Great. Any questions for Rick? Thoughts, concerns? Mark, do you have anything to add? You don't have to.
We're just glad to be a part of the project, and to be able to deliver, deliver a successful project again to the city.
Great, thank you.
Thank you all.
We'll be putting the sidewalks and that portion of the project of Greenway Trail Phase 4 on very soon, so that project is coming, coming along, and so is Greenway Trail Phase 5. So you'll see new, new things coming on the Riverfront.
Great, thank you so much.
Oh, funded by grants.
Brought to you by, brought to you by grants. Excellent, great. All right, Mark, do you have an update for us on anything?
Couple of things. Staff is reviewing the smoking ordinance, and particularly the enforcement side of that, we're actually meeting, the directors meeting tomorrow, that's gonna be one of our topics that we're gonna go through. We have already started working on the budget, finances, putting headcounts together, and coming up with revenue projections, they're working on those, and we should have those within the next few weeks. And then we're going to proceed forward with that, so, thank you.
Great, thank you. Any comments from the board? Anyone?
The, that's, just, well, as we move into our, our budget and looking at our finances, with unfunded mandates that we're gonna be responsible for, I would, would have thought that during, during this process, the last few months, that we would have considered, let me put it this way, moving forward, some, a hiring freeze, just to see where we are, because we all know that that is the most expensive part of organization, that being our, our workers, personnel. So I think we would be remiss if we didn't look at that, until we had some numbers that show that, okay, we can do this without that. I think it would be responsible of us to look at that, to see if we wanna hold up on that moving forward, on hiring any new folks, until we can see ourselves through these troubling waters.
Understand that, Commissioner, we have been looking at each individual as they've been brought forth, some of these have been in the pipeline already going forward, and so we've approved several of those, but in, for instance, in parks, we held off five of those hires, because the park maintenance during the winter months, at least, that we, we could take a little bit of time off, we were using some of those types of things, but we know grass is gonna start growing here shortly, and so some of those types of things are gonna go, and we can't, and it's gonna be difficult to do without, things like putting the dome up, all of those types of things. So basically, people are coming through, and they're justifying before we put them on for your all's approval. I get it, but, but then that's part of your new job. You get to hire them, you get to fire them.
Well, I was gonna say, I think there's two ways to look at this. One is that the Board of Commission decides that it's appropriate for us, as a commission, to introduce a policy that says there's a hiring freeze. The second, the second option is for us to know that two things happen. One, the staff determines whether or not we should be hiring together during the budget process, but then we do have the final say-so in approving those positions. So I think we have two options. One, we keep our eye on that as a commission, or two, we decide as a commission, there needs to be a formal policy that's called a freeze. I think there's two ways to go about that.
Absolutely. And once we, I guess, what I'm suggesting is, as we go through this, this process, and we look at, we look at that bottom line, then that will pretty much can tell us where we need to go from that point. As we move forward, I think, I think it could pretty much play out for us to see exactly what we need to do. Even though, I understand what you're saying about the grass is gonna grow, and we've done more with less around here for a while, so that's, that's my point.
And I appreciate that.
And I think, just to be clear, and if we want this to happen differently, we should probably have this conversation as a commission at some point, with some formality around it. But to date, what's been happening is John Perkins, our Finance Director, has been working with Mark and other staff to come up with some version of a proposal on how we do weather the storm through the next couple of months, knowing that not until the end of March will we actually know what we're dealing with, because the session has to come to a close in Frankfurt. So I know that work, oh, April, sorry, not, mid-April. So I know that work's been happening under the surface, I feel very confident that's where, that work's been happening. So I'm comfortable taking a cue from John and the crew on where those places are that we can find that money. If that needs to change, then someone needs to say that, and we need to know that from a commission perspective, so.
I wanted to say, yeah, speaking of, of open positions, I just wanted to say that there was a recent Fall in Love with Downtown shopping event, usually the Main Street Director, which is... Usually, the Main Street Director, which is an unfilled position right now, really takes the lead on that, and in the absence of that position, the local businesses and volunteers really stepped up and worked together and put together a really, really great event, and I really think that's awesome and such a testament to our, the rest of our city staff, and particularly the downtown business owners who worked together and did a great event, and I hope people fell in love with Downtown officially on Saturday, and I hope that people continue to come downtown and shop and enjoy our local businesses.
Absolutely. Anything else anyone wants to add?
I want to give an update really quick on the strategic planning community sessions. Commissioner Wilson and I were at the Siemens Church on Saturday. That was actually a very enlightening experience for us. I hope we can share all of that with you guys eventually. Commissioner Rhodes went with me today to the Arts Consortium Group, and we had a great conversation. So I am very encouraged, one of the things that we talked about after our strategic planning session in November was that we felt like we really needed to get more of feedback from our departments, but also the community, and so I'm excited to be out there. We actually called for groups to schedule us, which is different than I think sometimes it happens, we actually go out and ask people to schedule us. So we've had interesting groups that I would never have imagined. There's a group of nurses at Baptist Health who has scheduled a session, so it's been interesting, there's been groups that we haven't had, so I hope all of you can try to sign up and at least come to one of those so that you can experience what that is like out in the community. And with that, I think I, did we have any public comment? Oh, we have one.
Got one.
Great, Mr. Craig is back. Is he in here? Are you coming out? Okay, all right, good to see you. All right, with that, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Meeting adjourned, thank you all.